I call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want to thank, welcome everyone who's here tonight and everyone who is listening remotely at home on our recorded meeting. We won't be live tonight. I would like to remind everyone very quickly that because this is our first meeting in our new facility, we need to remind everyone to be very conscious of speaking into their microphones because that's the only, and that every speaker needs to be recognized by the chairman by name before speaking so that we will know who is speaking on the recording. And everyone as a form of politeness should refer to everyone by their last name, chairman or mister or miss. Anyway, real briefly, I will go over our agenda for this evening. First off, we have the consent agenda, which is the minutes from our March 10th meeting. Then we have a public hearing, conditional use permit, Lot 2 Commercial Center. Then we have, we'll hear items number three and four together, which is a PUD Development Final Plan Site Plan Design Review for Parkway Medical Plaza and a final plat for the Parkway. Then we'll have two master alternative sign plan reviews, one for Dunkin' Donuts and one for America's Community Bank. And finally, a presentation on the 2015 to 2020 Capital Improvement Plan. That being said, we'll move first to our consent agenda, which is the minutes from our March 10th meeting. Do I have any discussion on or motion on that item?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Trozen.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion.
Second.
Ms. Banks?
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda has been approved and we'll move now to the public hearing. Real briefly, I'll remind everybody of the procedures for a public hearing. First, I will open the public hearing and call for exhibits from the city attorney. Then the staff will give their presentation. They will take questions from the commission. Then the applicant will make their presentation, answer questions. Then I will ask for anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the petition or anyone who'd like to speak against the petition. Then we'll bring it back up here for discussion on the record. And then I will close the public hearing and we will then hopefully take a vote. That being said, I open the public hearing on the conditional use permit for the indoor shooting range. Mr. McDonald?
Mr. Chairman, the city has eight exhibits that it wishes to offer into the record at this time. Number one is the staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners located within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Hawley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we start, I'd like to just take a minute to introduce Rachel Waldridge. Rachel is our new planning technician and she will be presenting one of the items tonight, so I thought you might like to know who that is. And so introduce yourself and say hi maybe after the meeting. So before you tonight is the approval of a conditional use permit to allow an indoor shooting range on property that is located at 2410 South Outer Road. It's on the south side of Northwest South Outer Road, approximately 822 feet west of Northwest 22nd Street. It sits on about 1.45 acres and the property, as you may recall, is zone regional commercial. Moving on page three of seven in the previous actions and approvals, a couple of things are listed there, but probably most importantly is that the Planning Commission, excuse me, did consider a zoning change from a general business zone to a regional commercial zone on March 10th of 2014 and the city council approved that change on March 17th. That then opened the door to allow, with a conditional use permit, the indoor shooting With that regional commercial zoning and the conditional use permit, there are several conditions that the applicant will need to meet in order to be able to open his indoor shooting range. Those conditions are listed on page three and page four and page five of the report. I won't go over each of those conditions, but the one thing that you will note is that most of those conditions, with the exception of one, are also provided as conditions of approval at the end of the report. And the reason for that is because many of the items that are on here are details that will be worked out either through the building permit process or with their architect and their consultant as they go through this process of getting their plans ready. So take a moment to take a look at those conditions and if there are any questions, we will attempt to help answer some of those. The other key issue with this conditional use permit is that we don't have a specific parking requirement for indoor shooting ranges. We consider it a recreational use similar to the previous health club use. So for their parking, they're not required to add parking. They do have 52 parking spaces and at this point, it appears that that 52 parking spaces will be adequate. They do have additional land if necessary that they could add some additional parking, but right now they meet the parking requirement that the city has. Similarly with landscaping, they do not need to bring the site fully into conformance with the landscaping because it is a recreational use to a recreational use is how we looked at that. Both uses allowed. The applicant has explained that they do intend to add landscaping. They have not provided a landscape plan as yet. That will come in with the building permit drawings. Other than that, it will just be maintenance of existing and the addition of some additional They did provide a preliminary and final stormwater study. It is being reviewed or has been reviewed by the Public Works Department. The stormwater detention easements were provided on the final plat. Again, that was listed in the previous actions and the mitigation measures need to be designed and constructed as provided in that study to the satisfaction of the city's Public Works Department. Again, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit. There are 12 conditions listed and those conditions primarily are a reflection of the conditions required of a conditional use permit of this nature. So with that, if there are any questions, I'll stand for those and I think the applicant is here and be happy as well.
Are there any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Would the applicant like to come forward and make their presentation? And you will need to be sworn in.
You signed us where the testimony about the given this case would be the truth.
I did.
Need your name and address?
TJ Nyberg, 1200 Southwest Brook Court, Blue Springs, 6401.
Don't really, as before, I don't really have any presentation materials at this time, but I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? I guess not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this petition? And seeing none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak against this petition? Again, seeing none, I'll bring it back up to the commission for any comments on the record. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. And any further discussion and/or motions? Mr. Haney?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make motion to approve Blue Springs Commercial Center, Lot 2, number CUP 4-14-4360.
With the 12 conditions?
With the 12 conditions.
Have a motion for Mr. Haney, any second.
Second, oh, excuse me, go ahead.
Ms. Duhon?
I second the motion.
Have a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartolata?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Trozen?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Chairman Phillips?
Aye.
I think that covered it.
Did anybody, everybody got to vote? All right, that motion carries unanimously and that conditional use has been approved. Congratulations and welcome to town. We'll move on to items number three and four. Which is the PUD, final PUD Site Plan Design Review for the medical building and the final plat for the Parkway. Mr. Hawley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As explained, this application, there are two applications tonight for this particular item. The first is a planned unit development and site plan and design review for approval of two 10,000 square foot medical office buildings on approximately 2.44 acres of ground. The second is a final plat titled Parkway Second Plat, a replat of portion of Lot 2, Parkway West, First Plat, Lots 1 through 3. The final plat involves 4.14 acres and there are three lots proposed in the final plat. Property is located, as can be seen on the site location map, at 50520 Northeast Napoleon Drive. That is, excuse me, the northwest corner of Northeast Adams Dairy Parkway and Northeast Napoleon Drive. The development proposal for the two medical building actually will occur on about 2.44 acres of that four-plus acre final plat area. That they are subdividing that 2.44 acres into two lots, one of which will be approximately 1.13 and the other approximately 1.31. Then they would be putting one building on each lot. We look at the previous actions and approvals and move to page four of 12, the key issues with that are that a preliminary and final plat were considered by the Planning Commission on January 13th. The preliminary plat was actually for 13.6 acres and if I come up this way. This is that preliminary plat and as you can see, the plat extends from RD Mize Road, which is the northern extent, down through Napoleon, Napoleon. Napoleon is all along this boundary right through there. And then Adams Dairy Parkway is along here. As many of you will recall, this parcel and including this piece, that was approved for an assisted living facility, many of you will remember that, and was final plated, excuse me, and approved by the city council on January 21st, 2014. The Appearance Review Committee also reviewed this project on April the 15th of 2014 and they had a couple of recommendations after reviewing the project. One of the recommendations was that the first row of parking in the drive aisle that's located in the southern portion of Phase 2, and that would be this portion right here. Unfortunately, this drawing doesn't come across as well electronically, but the property line runs roughly along here and then it comes up and over. So that this row, this row of parking will actually be installed with the first phase project as well as this, but the row that was up here was actually originally anticipated to be in Phase 2. And the Appearance Review Committee recommended that that row of parking as well as the drive aisle that is just on the north side of that be installed with the first phase of the project and that was really just to guarantee or make them feel more comfortable with the parking for the first phase of that project. They also recommended that if the owner of the business that goes in is going to have an outdoor smoking area, that they locate that at least a minimum of 50 feet away from the door, from the entry door, and that they provide some kind of amenity, whether that be a bench and a smoking stand or whether that be just a paved area, something that really acknowledges that that's where smokers should go to smoke rather than standing by the front door. Those were their two recommendations. The access for this particular property will be off of Northeast Napoleon Drive. It's shown right here. And that access is set right now to serve both Phase 1 and Phase 2 of this project as well as the lot that will be remaining to the west. That access easement is shown on the final plat. The parking and loading, the applicant's proposing, there'll be 38 spaces in Phase 1 that will jump up with the inclusion of that row of parking in Phase 2 and that there'll be 49 additional spaces in Phase 2. Total number of parking spaces then will be 87 when the project is completed. The parking requirement typical for a medical service building is one per 200 square feet or in this case, it would be 100 spaces. However, because this, these buildings are going to be set up for a dialysis center, both of them, the parking requirement is a bit different and they will be requesting through the PUD that the reduction in parking for this particular property be allowed. That's based on a couple of things. One, they will have shared parking with the assisted living facility to the north, but also the way that the dialysis centers functions is really quite different than a typical medical doctor's office. In other words, they don't have four or five doctors or more taking patients on an ongoing, you know, basis where they're doubling up. It's really with the dialysis center, it's based more on the number of beds that you have and the patients that go there typically stay for an extended period of time, anywhere from two to four hours. And I'll let them address that in more detail if you have questions, but it does really function quite differently than a typical medical building. One of the questions that I had gotten was, well, as long as the dialysis center is there, that makes sense, but what happens if the dialysis center moves? Well, the answer to that is that yes, they could be made into medical buildings, but it won't be set up well for medical because it won't be divided into small offices. It would be better set up, to be quite frank with you, as just a typical office building because it's really an open floor plan with the dialysis type of setup. So what happens in the future, we're not sure, of course, but it's as equally likely that it would be something other than medical office, some other type of office as it is for medical office because it really won't be set up well for medical office. They are providing a loading space. The loading space is located in Phase 1 and it is located on this southwest corner of the building, right in here. That truck loading space will serve both Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the development. The setbacks, the proposed configuration meets the setbacks with the exception of the setback along the north property line, that would be this property line. That setback is 16 feet in lieu of 20 feet. And the west line, property line, which is here, that setback will be zero feet because the driveway runs, the mutually accessible driveway runs right up that property line. And the setback within Adams, within the Adams Dairy Parkway overlay district includes paving, so they will not meet that setback either. Again, they will be asking for some relief to those two setbacks through the PUD process. The applicant will be required to install sidewalk along Northeast Napoleon Drive and the trail slash sidewalk along Adams Dairy Parkway also will be refurbished, however, O'Reilly Development, which is the developer of the assisted living facility, has posted the escrow for that entire length and I believe, however, have not been able to confirm that they intend to improve that entire length of Adams Dairy Parkway. If not, the developer would have to do that on his portion and that's really for O'Reilly and him to work out since O'Reilly has already escrowed for that. The dumpster enclosure and screening for that is located near, just to the north of the loading area here and it is within an enclosure. Any other screening for mechanical that might be required, they would have to comply with the city code and we will check that as we find out where their mechanical equipment is and they will be required to meet that code. That will be done through the building permit plans and the plan check process. As far as landscaping goes, the applicant has required the buffers along the west side, which is along Northeast Adams Dairy Parkway and the north side. It says north side in the staff report, but that should be, it's the north side of Northeast Napoleon Drive, south side of their property. As you can see by the chart that's located on page seven of 12, they do meet the landscape requirements as far as their buffers go and they exceed those requirements in both Phase 1 and Phase 2. The open space, they're required within the Adams Dairy Parkway to provide 40% open space. We did not get the actual numbers of open space on this, however, it is a part of the larger PUD that includes the assisted living facility. The assisted living facility provided 45.3% of the open space required. They will have to provide us with additional information as far as the open space that they have and how that number changes with this development and that will be done through the building permit process as well. We do have a landscape plan. And I have up on the overhead, the Phase 1, there is also a Phase 2 landscape plan, so you get an idea of what their landscape proposal is. Again, we just don't have the exact percentages for the overall PUD for the open space. We'll need to get those. Stormwater detention, the applicant has provided the stormwater study and the study at the time of this report is under review by the Public Works Department and deficiencies found will have to be corrected. They will be required, they're proposing to use a combination of stormwater best management practices and improvements that are located along the east property boundary that would be adjacent to the Adams Dairy Parkway to address stormwater needs for the site. The applicant has also provided a traffic study. The Public Works Department has looked at the traffic study and at this point in time with this development, it does not appear that they will need to provide any improvements to the intersection of Northeast Napoleon Drive and Adams Dairy Parkway. If the site distant meets requirements, the applicant's required to separate the right and left turn movements with pavement markings, pretty straightforward. Eventually, as the development continues, there may be a need and that's something staff will need to negotiate with O'Reilly Development as well as the final, or final two properties that are remaining out there. I won't go over the Appearance Review Committee again. We've gone through that, but they did review this. I'll let the applicant talk more about the building elevations, but the exterior materials are primarily EPAS and glass. They do have a pronounced tower element at both the northwest and southeast corner of the buildings. The main entrance to the building in Phase 1 is located on the north side. It is this area here and it does have a canopy to help announce that main entrance. Again, we already talked about the delivery dock, which is located on the west side of the building near the southern end and the dumpster enclosure is located just immediately north of that delivery dock. That will serve again both Phase 1 and Phase 2. The building in number two or in Phase 2 is an exact mirror image of the building in Phase 1 and again, I'll let the architect talk about that. There are a couple differences, one being of course that the delivery dock feature won't be included in the Phase 2 building and I'm not sure if they intend to have a dumpster enclosure in the Phase 2 or whether they intend to use the dumpster enclosure with Phase 1 for the entire development. Staff does recommend approval of the planned unit development and site plan design review with nine conditions. Those conditions are provided on page 12. A couple of items worth note on the final plat. Again, the preliminary plat for this particular project was approved by the Planning Commission on January 13th this year. And the preliminary plat for this project, which we will go to, actually showed only two lots in this southern portion, a lot here and a lot here. And when the current developer looked at this lot that they were looking at purchasing, which would be this one, of course, and looked at the buildings they were putting on for them, and they can explain whether it's for financing reasons or other, they prefer to have each building sitting on its own lot and therefore subdivided this particular lot into two lots. And on page five of nine of the staff report, I talk about preliminary plats and the effect thereof and probably some of the key statements here are that the approval of the preliminary plat constitutes acceptance of an overall general planning concept for the subdivision. And when you review the final plat, it is to you to determine if it conforms to the approval of the preliminary plat and the standards of 406 and other applicable development requirements. And staff would make the argument that in fact, these, just the mere addition of one lot on what used to be, or the subdivision of this into two lots as opposed to one, that still meets the intent and the concept of the preliminary plat. And the reason that we say that is because had they wanted to, they could have easily went ahead and put those buildings on that single lot for reasons that are best described by them. They've chosen to put them on individual lots, but the general configuration of that preliminary plat remains the same. I think we've discussed sidewalks and we've discussed the hike bike trail. Staff is recommending approval of the final plat and we have recommended that with six conditions. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Do we have any questions for staff? Mr. Hawley, I'd like to get a little clarification just to make sure we're all on the same page here. On the Site Plan Design Review, we are only approving the first building. Is that correct?
No, I think you're approving both buildings.
Approving both buildings?
Yes, if your preference is to wait and have them come back to you with the second building, that's certainly your discretion, but the way the application was submitted, it appears to me that both buildings are coming before you at this time.
Well, the way I read your notes, the reason I assumed- Well, the way I read your notes, the reason I assumed that was you said that you thought the second building was a mirror image, but there were a couple of things that you weren't sure were exactly the same, i.e. the loading dock and the trash bay and all of that.
Right, I believe that the loading dock and the trash enclosure that is located with the first phase serves the entire development, and that there's no need for them then to duplicate that on the second building, so that that area that is currently a loading dock and a trash enclosure in Phase One will simply be an extension of a building while in Phase Two. I'm sure the architect can clear that up.
Is there any problem with them doing that one row of parking that's on the second lot in the first phase versus?
That's not a problem from our standpoint.
Okay.
And I believe they've agreed to do that as well.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
No, it's not a problem from our standpoint. Once they do the final plat, the final plat pretty much allows them to do construction on both lots.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hawley.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward and make their presentation?
Thank you, Jim, for that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the floor here. My name is Steve Besenbacher, and I'm with Block Real Estate Services in Kansas City, and we are the applicant for the Parkway Medical Plaza. I'd like to take a moment to introduce my team here that will be here speaking today. Kevin Berman with Hafer Wysocki Architects is the lead designer and architect for this project. Trevor Tast with Olson Engineers has served as our civil engineer. And Greg Gershner with Siegfried Bingham Law Firm has served as our legal counsel through this process. The development that we're talking about, the Medical Plaza, has really been designed to be more of a complimentary service to what is taking place just to the north of this property with the O'Reilly Development and the assisted living facility, and provide complimentary uses to that facility there. And so that's really the genesis of this whole project. Both Block Real Estate and O'Reilly have worked closely together, both on the acquisition of the site initially, and then going forward. To the questions that have come up regarding the access easements between the two groups and working through the process of the hike bike trail and those things, I was with the O'Reillys today, actually, and we discussed this at length, and so I feel very confident that we're all on the same page as it relates to those developments going forward. So what I thought I'd do is turn it over to Kevin Berman, let him walk through the actual design of the project and those things, and then open up to any questions that you may have for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Kevin Berman, Hafer Wysocki Architecture. Did you need an address or place of business?
No, we don't.
No, we're okay. Okay, yeah, thanks for hearing us today. We're very excited about this project, been focused on it for months now, trying to come up with the right product and the right development. I'm going to go through, I can answer any of the questions that you brought up, maybe curiosity about the second building, and talk about that, and the clients, and any kind of material. We have a couple of changes I want to show, so they're part of the record, you'll see them, very minor in terms of material use as we talk with our contractor. But let me go ahead and get started. I'm going to have to move around here because I can't see. You want to drive for me? I'll try and use the microphone as best I can, or can you hear me? Can I project to you?
We need the microphone.
You need the microphone, okay. It's a little bit offside. As you know, the site's in the Adams Dairy Parkway corridor. It was a development set up with a series of guidelines to try and create excellence in the area, added green space, beautiful architecture, added approval committees in terms of the design review committee aesthetic review as part of this overlay. Forty percent open space, which I did want to let you know that we do satisfy with this current site plan, it'll average up when you look at the whole development, creating pedestrian connections and providing for significant architectural features. It's desirable to have nice buildings, beautiful landscape, and nice addition to the communities. The campuses we've been talking about, it's been master planned, so it's all a holistic concept. Adams Dairy Senior Community Center, you can see that in the lower right corner of this image, it has pitched roofs, kind of a buff palette, you know, triangular roofline, gabled end. And we tried to take the material palette and the scale of the building, the fenestration type and the overall character, and make sure our building was compatible with that in the spirit that this is a master plan development. So you can see some of the roof lines and materials and colors that we've done to do that. The arrows show the idea of cross parking and access easements, the drive we've created and the shared parking and circulation is another way that we're making this building feel like a part of the whole master plan and not kind of isolated unto itself. Our landscape plan, we wanted to do a full illustration so you could see the layers and quality of the landscape plan we're providing. There's a lot of seasonal color, you know, blooming red, purple trees, a lot of ornamentals going on, a nice screening, and you can just see from the illustrative how dense and beautiful this landscape plan is going to be. There's a lot of screening going along the loading area, the juniper, as you can see in the upper right corner of the tree planting photographs, that's what line the dock area along Napoleon. So we are doing a good job completely, you know, screening off that area with landscape. Got my pointer. There was a question, and I'm sorry it was left off the original site plan that we submitted to you, about the trash enclosure for Building Two. That is what, that little rectangle is there, so it is part of our drawings, and as we continue to submit drawings to you, it'll show up. Another good thing to talk about with this site plan in front of us is the question of whether the building type might change, and what might happen with the parking counts if that was the case. There are some truck movements that have eliminated, in this gray square, there's no parking there, to allow for this particular tenant's truck needs. There's also a dock area here, if this went to a medical use that needed more parking, or an office use that needed more parking, you know, the truck needs would probably go away and be able to stripe that area, and I think we could get back to that five per thousand with a different building user, so I thought I'd address that quickly. This is just a little bit more, you know, black and white detail to show how the dock area, and I think Jim did, Mr. Hawley did a good job of describing how our delivery area worked, where our drop-off canopy was, you know, that we meet the variety of setbacks. This is the slight setback deviation we need over here. You can see the building's on an angle, and so about 45 feet past the corner of the building, we're back at the 20-foot requirement. But what it stems from is the need for the efficiency of this particular layout to have two bays of parking, the right-sized sidewalks, you know, the width of the buildings, the way they're working, you know, the math just kind of worked out that way. There are a couple of site plans we looked at that didn't have parking between the buildings, but they didn't allow us to have this nice interrupted green space in front of the building. So with that little deviation, we're able to get this layout, which is really the most beautiful presentation, we think, to Adams Dairy Parkway. These elevations, I think you've got a lot of visuals with three-dimensional to see the character of the building, so they don't really explain that as well as they just, we have our materials labeled on these. And we are going to use all architectural precast, and so at first we thought EPAS would be the least expensive thing to do. We talked to our contractor, they said, no, we're fine using precast, and it's a higher quality, it's going to last forever, and we're going to use nice rocks and aggregates in the panels to create even more interest. And so what is now currently been described as EPAS along this cream band is now precast. So I wanted to just get that out so you could approve that, if that's okay with you. Something else this elevation shows is there used to be the need for the dock to actually go down four feet, like a large building's loading dock you might have seen before. Well, as we look at the tenant's real needs, they don't actually need a loading dock, they need a loading area. So what we show on these elevations is there's not a depression, the surface of the grade is flat with the main elevation finished floor of the building, but that same area in plan does exist. The truck will still pull up there, they'll unload, they just don't need a true, you know, recessed four-foot dock area, which we like, because the site's going to have more green. There won't be kind of an industrial-looking presentation off Napoleon with this loading dock, so we see it as an improvement visually to the development. And this shows the same, you know, going from a dip to straight across, and some of the landscape treatments. Well, kept it short, hopefully that explains some of the questions you had, and we're here to answer any other of your questions you have, and we look forward to the project.
Do we have any questions for the applicant concerning the site plan design review? Okay. Did you also want to address the final plat at all?
The way we're splitting the lots? Yeah, the quick answer to that is, should sometime down the future, in the future, there might be an interested buyer for a building. Typically, they'll come in, the bank's going to want to see, this is the piece of land, this is the building, and this is the parking that goes with it, versus dealing with that situation later. It made sense to identify two buildings as two lots with parking that supports each lot individually. Now, along with that, there's, you know, cross easements, which these guys can tell you more about, so you don't really change the use of the site should that event occur. A new landowner comes in, but the site functions in the same manner, because of the way the legal documents are set up. It's set up for purchase. That's too many words to say that one thing.
Any questions concerning the final plat? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Bring it back up here for discussion among the commission. I would first let us consider the site plan design review, and would entertain a motion if there's no further discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Haney.
I make a motion to approve Project Parkway Medical Plaza One, final PUD plan and site plan design review, number PUDS four dash fourteen dash four three seven zero, with the listed exceptions.
I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Graham.
I would second the motion.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That site plan...
Mr. Chairman, I have to abstain for business reasons on this particular item, item number three and item number four.
Thank you, Mr. Bartolotta. I'd forgotten to, you'd reminded me of that. Got carried away here in our new surroundings.
Now you could have a vote.
So we have six ayes and one abstention. That motion does carry, the site plan's been approved. We'll move now to the final plat, and again, I believe Mr. Bartolotta will be abstaining.
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Haney.
Make a motion to approve the final plat, Parkway, second plat, a replat of Lot Two, Parkway West, plat Lot One through three, PF dash four dash fourteen dash four three six nine, with the six exceptions.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Recommend it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trozen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and again, we have six ayes, one abstention, and that motion will go to the City Council with our recommendation. We move now to item number five, which is the site plan design review for, I'm sorry, it is the alternative sign plan for Dunkin' Donuts. And Ms. Woodbridge, Woodbridge, thank you. I meant to say welcome earlier, and I forgot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Again, I'm a little tongue-tied here in our new surroundings, trying to get everything straightened out. So if you'd like to go ahead, thank you.
All right, thank you. Agenda item five is Master Alternative Sign Plan for Dunkin' Donuts. Sai Jeta is our applicant. The address is located at 1225 Northwest Seven Highway, and as you see on the location map, the site is located on the west side of Highway Seven, approximately 1,000 feet north of I-70, on .418 acres, Lot One. The existing zoning is general business district. And the Planning Commission approved of the site plan, scroll down here, in 2012, you'll remember this project, the site plan design review was approved for it. And we're here today because the applicant is requesting a deviation for the monument sign located on, let's see here, it's located on the southeast of the building structure. And the applicant is requesting a size and location deviation for the monument sign per section 501.060 for monument freestanding. The signs, the sign requires a maximum of 75 feet. The applicant is requesting a deviation for 78 feet, so three feet addition, and a setback of eight instead of 10. And the monument sign is illuminated internally, and per UDC section landscaping, landscaped planting areas required for all freestanding permanently mounted signs. And staff recommends approval of item five, Master Alternative Sign, with stipulations to, found on page five of your packet. The applicant must obtain an approved signs permit prior to construction of the sign, and per issuance of a sign permit for the monument sign, the applicant must submit a landscape plan. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Banks.
If I may ask, if they reduced it to 75 square feet, could...
Well, they're requesting 78.
I know.
But if they...
If they reduced it to 75 square feet, could they meet the 10-foot setback?
We'd have to discuss it with applicant. Would you like to come up?
Might be a question saved for just for a minute.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for staff? Okay. Would the applicant like to make their presentation?
Hello, everyone. This is Sai Jeta, and the franchisee. I don't have a presentation, but I can answer some of the questions. To start with, the question on the size of the sign, the only reason we are asking for a deviation from the standard 75 square foot, so we are looking for a 78 square foot only because Dunkin' Donuts has standard sign sizes. So the first size they had was 78 square foot, the next was 40 square foot, so they didn't have any size in between that to go with 75. If they had a 75, I would have gone with 75. We could try to customize it to 75, but that's a lot more expensive, and it's only a three square foot deviation from what a standard size is, so that's why we are looking at a 78 square foot instead of a 75. The next lower size was 40 square foot, which is half the size, so I didn't want to go to that small size, so that's why I was requesting for a deviation on the size by only three square foot. I hope I answered that question.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Trozen.
And can you also, Mr. Chairman, can you also explain the request for the setback of eight feet versus 10 feet?
Sorry, yeah, good point. Like I mentioned in some of the comments that I sent to the commission for review, the setback for eight feet, we are requesting that only because behind the sign is our parking spaces, so if we move it any further, it would, the sign would be blocked by the cars parked in the parking spaces beside the sign. So we were trying to keep the sign further from the parking, so nothing that's parked blocks the sign from the visibility. That was the reason we were asking for that setback to be eight feet, that way the sign is in front of the parking, not in the way of the parking.
Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you. Bring it back up here for discussion, and/or motions.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Bartolotta.
The sign that we're, that we're moving, and we're putting in the setback at eight versus ten, and being a little bit bigger, is there an obstructed view on the exit egress or exit of the property?
No, we don't believe so. Engineering went out and checked that out, and they don't think so, no.
Any other questions? Any motions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trozen.
You had brought up that if you made a deviation to the sign, there would be a financial impact as far as the cost of that. Do you know what that cost is?
For deviating on the size of the sign is to customize the whole sign from the beginning. I was told at least around ten K to modify that sign, because they have to do it from scratch. But the standard size is what they have readily available, so it's not only the cost, but also the time to manufacture it from scratch on that.
I would imagine that cost to be considerable. Any other questions? Mr. Graham.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move for approval of the master alternative sign plan for the Dunkin' Donuts, case number ASP dash four dash one four dash four three five seven, with the two staff comments, conditions.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Ms. Duhon.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That sign variation has been approved. Thank you, and again, welcome to town. We move now to item number six, which is another alternative sign plan for America's Community Bank. And I believe this time we have Ms. Grasshoff doing the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, oh, I'm sorry, before we get started, Mr. Haney has asked me to let everyone know he will be abstaining from this vote. Go ahead.
All right. The sixth agenda item we have tonight, again, is for the America's Community Bank. It's a master alternative sign plan, it's a request for approval of a blade sign on the Eleventh Street side of the bank, which is located at eleven hundred West Main Street, which is the southwest corner of Main Street and Eleventh Street. The bank is located within our downtown, downtown zoning district. It is a T-five general urban zone, and the existing land use is, again, a bank. The applicant is requesting approval for a projecting blade sign, which would be located over the walk-up window and night deposit area located on the east elevation of the existing bank, which is along the Eleventh Street. The request is basically for a second projecting sign. Right now, the sign code, section five oh one oh seven oh I six D, only allows one projecting sign per building. So, this would allow them to have a second. They recently had, did get sign approval, sign permit approval for, to put a projecting sign on the north side of the building, so this would be for a second sign. This sign does provide a different function in that it's more of like a directional sign for the recessed walk-up window and night deposit location. Again, it's located on the east side, and the existing sign is located on the north. The sign code allows for businesses to have wall signs on each elevation that is adjacent to a public right-of-way, but it does not allow for more than one of these blade signs, regardless of where the building is located. Staff believes that the sign is appropriate for the location and intended purpose. The sign does meet all the requirements for a projecting sign. So, with that, staff recommends approval of the master sign plan application with one condition, and I will take any questions.
Are there any questions for staff on this? Okay, thank you very much. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and council, or, planning commissioners. I really don't have anything to add, I think Ms. Grasshoff explained it very well. The only difference in the sign that's on the Eleventh Street side of the building, it's a, says America's Community Bank, and it's a rather large sign, it's about eight feet tall, and you can see that as you're traveling down Main Street, east and west. If you're coming, like, from Walnut to the north, you don't see any sign on the building at all. There's no visible sign. So, the fact that we would have this second sign along Eleventh Street, and it does have a, I'm sure you've seen the sign in your packet, it has an arrow that points to the walk-up window and the night drop window, little hands, kind of keeping with the style of the building, and it's not very large, but it would be something that could be seen also from Walnut, if you're traveling east-west on Walnut, looking north down Eleventh Street, you could see that sign. And we asked for a second sign, because if it was a flat sign, you really wouldn't be able to see it unless you were traveling on Eleventh Street. So, that was our thought process there. I'd be happy to answer any questions about it, if there are any.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need your name for the record.
I'm sorry, I just started talking. Cindy Miller, I work with America's Community Bank.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? I would just like to say that I really like the first sign. It's very much in keeping with the character of the building, and it really adds to the downtown, and I think this one will do the same thing.
Yeah, thank you.
There are no comments, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Trozen.
I'd like to move for approval of case file number ASP dash four dash fourteen dash four three five four, pertaining to the approval for a blade sign on Eleventh Street for America's Community Bank. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I also would like to compliment the applicant as far as the proposed sign design. I think it is a compliment to the improvements you've made to the building, as well as the downtown improvements.
Thank you.
We have a motion? Do I have a second? Ms. Duhon.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Again, we have six ayes and one abstention. And that alternate sign plan has been approved. Thank you. Okay. We move now to, I believe Mr. Hawley is going to present the 2015-2020 Capital Improvements
And let's start off with a picture of the bank, and the sign that they have along Main Street. That's America's, obviously, America's Community Bank renovation, and that was part of last Also, like to start with a big thank you for the CIP review committee noted up there, the council members, Councilman Quabell, Edmondson, and Fowler, and our planning commissioners, the chairman Billups, as well as Commissioner Duhon. We also had Parks Commissioner George Deibert serve on the committee for the second year in a row. We'd like to thank him, and certainly staff, including city administration, public works, parks, police, and always a special thanks to finance, who really does a brunt of the work on the CIP. The CIP is being submitted in accordance with the city's charter, the 2014-15 to 1920 projects and budget are consistent with our past CIP budgets and the directives provided by the city council. Projects are once again grouped in our funded and unfunded projects, and the majority of projects provide maintenance, rehabilitation, and equipment replacement. Total budget for this year, including the funded and the unfunded projects for the six-year CIP, is approximately one hundred and seventy-eight point seven million. And by way of comparison, last year's six-year CIP was one hundred and seventy-one point two, and the year before that was one hundred and forty-nine point four. Total for the funded projects for the six-year period is forty-eight point five million, and that represents twenty-seven percent of the total six-year budget, both funded and unfunded. The cost of the unfunded project for the six-year period is one hundred and thirty-point one million, and projects proposed to be funded for the 2014-15 budget year totals twenty-five point two eight million, and that represents approximately fifty-two percent of the total funded projects for the six-year CIP. And we'll talk a little more about that as we move through. There is one particular project that really sets those numbers the way they are. And if you look at this pie chart, you might guess which project that would be, as a water utility represents eighty-four percent of the total allocation by project types. Again, streets, last year, as you may recall, we, in order to provide some matching funds, we did not do the street rehabilitation program, so we gave that a year's rest, as well as the sidewalk improvement. But again, this year, that is back in our CIP. Total number of projects for the proposed next six years, funded and unfunded, is ninety-four. Fifteen of those projects are proposed to be funded, and seventy-nine are proposed on the unfunded list. As you know, the unfunded list still remains very important, as they identify the needs of the city. Also, staff always is seeking funding sources in hopes of moving some of those projects that are currently unfunded to the funded side. Projects that were carried forward from last year's CIP in 2014-15, Community Development Block Grant Program is a yearly program that is always on the CIP. So, again, to reiterate, the street rehabilitation program is, is again on the CIP. It always was on the CIP, it's just moved forward and will occur this year. Snow plow and dump truck, the street difference, sidewalk repair and maintenance, and citywide maintenance. Rubber tired skid steer, if you want to know what that is, we're fortunate to have Chris Sandy here tonight, who would be able to explain that much better than I. Misaladious water main maintenance and water tank maintenance. And I go over these and, and talk about these a little bit, because I think it really shows that we really are in a maintenance and a replacement mode with our CIP. I mean, there's not, most of these projects involve maintenance types of items, and they're things you can't just put off, so. Projects that are brought forward from the list of unfunded, again, twelve-thousand-pound hydraulic excavator, and the Tri-County Water Upgrade. And the Tri-County Water Upgrade is that project that really skews those percentages. It's the most significant project from a dollar standpoint in this year's CIP, it is a twenty-one million dollar project. In twenty thirteen, twenty nineteen, or last year's CIP budget, it was listed on the unfunded project. It's now being proposed to be funded for the upcoming 2014-15 fiscal year, and the funding for this project was included in the recent sewer and water rate study adopted by the council in 2013. The project allows the city to increase water supplied by the Tri-County Water Authority, thereby helping to stabilize the city's cost for water in the future. And as, as many of you know, we currently get water from three sources. If you have questions about this, we can back up once this presentation is over, and I know Chris would be happy to go into further detail, but this, this, this particular project really, really does, for the city, looking to the future, help to stabilize our costs for water. So, he can explain that further. And, as many of you have probably seen, we are putting sidewalk along Tenth Street. This current project is going on now. That was from last year's CIP. Some proposed new projects for this year's CIP and the next six-year CIP. We have a one-point-five-ton dump truck, snow truck, a street department sign truck, whoops, the MIP Ring Road, this is the extension to Phase One of the Ring Road, and it brings the Ring Road from the interior of the MIP out to our Demise Road. Stormwater master plan is being proposed in the CIP, yet to be funded. Again, master plan would provide the city with an overall guiding document with the goals of reducing flood dangers, protecting water quality, enhancing the environment and recreational opportunities, and achieving long-term maintenance stability. Also, equally important is that it allows the city, or will help to allow the city, to meet EPA stormwater permitting requirements. We also have a lift, lift station force main tie-in. Once again, I'll let Chris explain that. I'm not even sure what a new headworks is, but we must need one. And then we have the Water SCAD, or Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System, that is also placed on our list of projects. And I think it is significant to note, the current system was installed in '99, and is no longer supported, kind of like Windows XP. So, this project would provide for the new software, hardware, and programming changes. That's why that's listed. And I hope all of you have had a chance, and I'm sure you have, to get out and see the Woodschapel Road improvements and the Triple Diamond Interchange out there. It seems to be functioning really well. We get lots of compliments on that, and as you know, they are moving forward with Phase Two of Woodschapel Road, which is to the south, down through Walnut Street. So, that work is occurring as we speak. The city council action on the capital improvement program, the notice of public hearing, will be provided to newspaper this Thursday and published on Saturday, May the third, and the adoption by the city council and public hearing will be considered, will occur on May nineteenth. With that, if you have any comments, we'll certainly listen tonight. Any questions, we're here to try to answer those. And if, if for some reason you go back and you kind of look through these documents, and you think of a question before May nineteenth, please feel free to get ahold of us, and hopefully, we can amend that in time to get it to the city council. With that, I will stand for questions.
Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Hawley? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hawley.
Thank you. Just, I failed to mention that the, the planning commission really looks at this as, as, from the standpoint of, is the CIP in conformance with the, with our comprehensive plan? And certainly, given the maintenance mode of this for our, our city's infrastructure, you can be assured that it is in, in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Certainly furthers the comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, finally, we move on to other business, and the first thing I'd like to do, I'm remiss here again, would be to welcome Councilman Culpepper to our midst. It's our first meeting as the liaison from the city council, and as mayor pro tem.
It's like coming home.
Welcome back, except, of course, we're not where we used to be. And we have two items here we'd like to remind everyone of. Ms. Vindora, would you like to talk about next week?
I've RSVP'd for the Eaststrom Jackson County Planning Commissioners Training Series that we have, and you're welcome to attend as well, Councilman. It's new trends in the site planning. This meeting will take place at five-thirty, from five-thirty to eight, at Lead Bank. If you've never visited Lead Bank, it's very, very nice meeting room. We are, we will have a dinner there, a full dinner, so. Jim, you might want to speak on the, whoever the speaker is.
Yeah, the speaker is Steve Rhodes, who is with Virio, and some of you may recall, Virio helped with the Forty Highway Corridor Plan, they were a subconsultant for the main consultant, and they intend to talk on new trends in site planning. And also, they will speak a little to address the current thinking on green infrastructure. So, that's the focus of the meeting.
So, and you need to have your RSVPs by when?
Preferably tonight. Yes, I will be calling in to our caterer tomorrow morning, so.
Okay, so anybody who hasn't RSVP'd, who would like to go, please let Karen know this evening. And we also have an item here, Ms. Grasshoff, would you like to talk about the annual report draft that you sent everyone late?
I'll leave these on, do you want to just come up here?
Sure.
Great.
Great. You should have all received, it's just a draft copy of this year's, or actually, 2013 annual report via email last Thursday or Friday. If you can get comments to me, if you have them by May ninth, which is next Friday, that would be much appreciated.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else anyone would like to bring before us this evening? Okay. That being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved?
Mr. Trozen moved for adjournment. Do I have a second? Mr. Bartolotta has a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.